Okay. Operations.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I also just say that RJ is gone, so RJ and Jen switched this weekend and the next meeting.
I have a couple of slides to share. No, that's Katie's.
Oh.
Katie gets that.
Okay.
So, the first thing I would like to mention this evening is on the agenda is we'll be asking for approval to approve a quote for Kuplinsky to cleaning out this dry well. It has failed and it is a project that is bigger than our equipment and Stephen can handle. It's a double barrel dry well, so there's an item on the agenda tonight to approve and purchase of that of the service. So, it's a wrong right in Maine and as you can see, it's definitely not filtrating correctly. So, I wanted to provide an update on the trip hazard. We actually do have a program. I know that it's come up a couple of times at council meetings from citizens and I thought I'd share the fact that we do have a full-fledged program. And the steps to the sequence of events that happens when we find a trip hazard is usually a homeowner will call in or citizen will call in and say there's really got a problem here, it's a hazard. And so then Dennis will send out a letter to the homeowner who is responsible for that trip hazard, usually in front of their home. And if, give them the option, they can either repair it themselves or if they don't have the financial funds to do so, they'll contact the city and say, "We need you to come do it." They will sign a liability waiver with the city and then Dennis will schedule with our staff to actually go up and have it ground down. And we have an address list as of right now and so we just keep this running tally of hazards. And actually, out of about 30 trip hazards, we only have about seven left, so...
Do we charge for that, Jen?
No.
For the citizen?
No.
Then why would we be the incentive for them to ever do it themselves? I guess you wouldn't be.
So, yeah. So, it's a huge liability. We have had a couple of citizens trip and fall pretty badly, so I think the liability is the most important part of that.
So, I'm curious to see if there's one on Light Street on North Ormond right at Boone because I've been trying to get attention to that since Kyle was in elementary school. He's now a junior.
Do you know the house number by chance?
It's in the 1200, 1100, 1200s.
We have a 1216 Ormond.
No.
So, if it's not out there, let them know.
Yeah, it is now, actually I have a fairly recent trip. It's now lifted the entire thickness of the slab.
Okay.
So, now then what?
If you could get me the address and I'll forward that to Dennis. Now, once we hit two inches, we can't repair, we can't grind it, it has to actually be replaced.
Right.
So, but our crews will go out, look at it, make an assessment, and then the homeowner is responsible for the replacement. So, he does not replace them and we're just grinding. And then on part of the program, our goal is to go out and do one day a month. So, it takes the crews anywhere from 30 minutes to two hours to grinding down, depending on how extreme it is. So, we try to make a goal, one day a month, to stay ahead of it and to stay on top of us and doesn't get behind. We do have a program.
I'm just really concerned about this one particularly because Kyle went head over, handlebars on it, it's back now in elementary school and I know much other kids have and it gets worse every year. I'm just surprised everybody's...
Yeah.
...a homeowner or whatever. The house has changed hands several times. Here it is, 1204 North Ormond.
Okay. We can send a letter, please.
I mean, make a comment. Maybe what the council should do is take into consideration, it's probably not a huge number where we get these trip hazards, we're grinding this, sitting getting into spending a lot of time and effort to try to get the citizen to do it, or if they're not going to do it, we do it, then if, to look at the consideration, we just go out and do it ourselves, relieve the liability.
I'd like to give you a little bit of background on this whole program. So, in the state of Washington, every single city places a responsibility of the sidewalk on the adjacent property owners, all of you know. And so, what all cities do is, and we did it too, is you're made aware of it, you send a letter, and then you have to go through a process to give them their due as far as putting the responsibility back to them. In my research with MRSC and also our ClearRisk, there are court cases where the cities lose. And so, even though the state law says the homeowner, property owner is responsible, the city knew it and didn't do anything, there's a liability and exposure there. So, and also, that's part one. Part two is that the only way to compel them to do it is to lean their property. And to lean their property, you have to have a public hearing, which generates public notices, which generates a lot of staff time. So, you end up spending hours and hours and hours to hopefully get it fixed. So, what we started, it's been about a year or two, Jen?
About a year.
About a year. When we had some trip hazards and we needed to fix our own sidewalks, we checked with others and Sean helped us compose a letter that waives, they're waiving their responsibility to give us the authority to fix it, but we can only fix it if it's two inches or less.
Right.
And it's, I don't know, to fix it's probably 50 bucks. To have a hearing are hundreds of dollars and hundreds of hours. So, it was so much more efficient for us just to do that. But if it gets dislocated to a point where we can't, then we would have to follow up and have them do it. It's very difficult for us to do the work and they get reimbursed because you have, in order to get reimbursed, you have to lean the property.
Are there cities out there that find them?
Oh, yeah.
Why can't we find them?
Well, you can find them... I said yes too soon. What you can do is have a hearing and then the hearing examiner can find them or place a lien on it. I don't think you can place a lien on it for court enforcement. Dennis, do you know?
Excuse me?
Do you know if you can find?
I don't know.
I don't know if you can place a fine on it for court enforcement. Brian, do you know?
No, I recall having a conversation with ClearRisk about this whole situation and what's hap, the city is currently doing is what was recommended with, to ClearRisk.
We could address that in a workshop or something like that, but then also not put us in a position where we totally relieve the citizen's responsibility because then the responsibility goes back on us, we know we did some trips.
Some of the court cases over on the west side of the state are very enlightening because of some very serious injuries that happen and, yeah, they get redrawn out. But I don't know, I can find out if we can find them.
Have we had discussions for the neighborhoods that are under HOAs to see how they're enforced up there doing these and if they've notified that they're in those?
So, HOAs, we've had conversations with them. They tell the residents that it's their homeowner's responsibility, if they have any questions to contact the city. So, they do have tree trimming programs, but as far as fixing sidewalks, I haven't...
I mean, I'm just thinking of handing letters out and putting liens up people's houses for less of an issue than this.
The other challenge is, and I don't want to get wrapped around the axle on this, but our tree policy and some of the trees that were built were, excuse me, planted 20 years ago are now very problematic. I know, Jen, you had a lady that had a sycamore that she can't even begin to fix her sidewalk without taking the tree out. So, sometimes it's a very, it's very complicated. It's more complicated than just fixing the sidewalk because we also require trees. And so, we've changed our approved list, so now they're better trees. But we try, our goal is to find solutions and to get, keep everyone safe.
There's been a couple, another one, HOA meetings. Those meetings, I keep bringing up the problem of the dead trees along Mission Avenue. And HOA keeps saying they don't have the money to do it, but I think they do. They increased our dues 28% last year, so they should have plenty of money to replace those trees.
They, it's scheduled that they will do, they will replace 50% of them this fall, in September and October, when the weather is better, and then they're anticipating replanting the other 50% in the spring of 2019.
Very good, thank you. Let's make sure we hold them to that.
Okay. Great, so one thing I've mentioned a few times over the past few months, but I thought I'd share with you today is the asset management software that I'm proposing to put on 2019 budgets. And what this will allow us to do is, it's a company and there are several companies out there that provide asset management software and information gathering, but the one that I've been most interested in is the Dude Solutions. Here, Dude Solutions again, that's what it says. Mostly because they actually provide, in the service of the software, a facility condition assessment with an unbiased engineering firm, so it's not a vendor, they're not a contractor, they're a non-biased engineering firm that will come in and provide an assessment of all of your facilities, from the roof to the HVAC to the flooring to the everything. And they will put together a very extensive detailed report of what the status of everything is at that moment. And then from there, they'll, they'll take that and log it into the software program. So, moving forward, you can actually track from that day forward, all of your future work, your projects, like when Nick goes over to fix lights and we've got lights missing or we had to call out the roofing company. So, every time these work orders are placed after that, it logs it into this system and it will provide us, with this particular company, it will provide us with a 30-year projection, so that I would actually be able to have this graph anticipating when is the Pavilion Park picnic shelter roof anticipated to need to be replaced. It's got another 10 years typically. So, and that will go for all facilities. So, I'm working on that right now. At the point where I'm visiting other companies to see what they do and the reason I tend to steer away from them is they use your own city staff to gather the data and the assessment, which there's no way we can do that. It would just be tough on our staff to have to go out and make these assessments when you can have a professional firm come in and do it as part of the package deal. So, it is, I think all in all, it's almost $30,000.
And that's included in that 30, right?
Correct, yeah. Like 16 of it, 16 or 20 of it initially is the assessment itself and then the software setup. And then there's a $5,700 renewal fee every year for the software. But I really, really think this will help us a lot and it will help staff not have, not be reactive to fixes. It's definitely a jungle for us to keep.
It's not just imagine like crisis, I think it has great merit, which is...
And, and great budgeting.
It's a great idea to me. Hopefully, we won't have any more surprises like, "We need a new irrigation system."
Yeah. This should help immensely with, with being reactive versus proactive.
That's a great, great idea.
Katie and Lisa and I, of course, want a little bit on database decision-making and this will go a long way toward that coupled with our strategic plan. I think this is a great step forward.
All right, and the last thing, over the weekend, we had our last summer event of the season and that was the symphony and it was wonderful. Biggest crowd that we've ever had for the symphony and the weather was perfect, everything went off beautifully and...
Who's the lady in black?
They, I have the pleasure and honor to be able to lead and conduct Stars and Stripes Forever, which will now forever be there and there to my heart, and it was so much fun. And so, my little story, so I have a baton in my right hand, which was Eckert Pro. I was borrowing that from him. And as I'm conducting about halfway through, I got a little too excited and the baton hit the music stand, flipped out of my hand and landed in the front row by Lisa. So, I just kept going and they all laughed, they were kind of laughing at me, but it was really fun.
I can get that, I listen.
And it was awesome and amazing and, yeah, wow, awesome. Are there any questions?
Here's a from now, I think.
A great turnout.
Oh, the gathering of the house, Dan.
I think three to 4,000 people. That I don't think, yeah, so. That's all I know.
So, this is my report for September, but it actually covers October. I don't know if October, but August, I got to October. Okay, so, we're trying, we're trying to...
I think we're dealing with a short, with a short timers attitude here.
Okay, so, I'm going to start out with a couple videos that I, that, to show you an event that we had. And that was, we had Officer Jones come and do a story time. And so, here he is reading a book about making a scary face and this was...
No, make a scary face now.
Ooh, let's see your scary faces.
Yikes, yikes, not that scary.
Okay, and then we had another one. After he was finished, we took everybody outside and he had stickers to give everybody and this little, this one little girl was particularly fun to see what happened.
You're strong.
Say thank you.
You're welcome.
So, the kids just had a great time with Officer Jones. We are so fortunate to have him come over and be willing to do that with us. And, okay, so then I guess I can do the next picture. Okay, yeah, that was another picture that somebody took, I don't know. I just thought that was the most precious thing in the world, in the world. So, the kids just loved him and I think he loved the kids right back. And so, we hope to be able to do that often. It doesn't have to be with Officer Jones, but he sure knew how to capture the enthusiasm of telling some really great stories. Okay, just a backward glance for the summer now, our summer reading program, the theme nationwide was Libraries Rock. And Jenny pulled together this really great pictochart comparing some past year to this My eyesight is so bad, I still can't see it. I couldn't see it on the computer. I was hoping I could see it better, made bigger. But you can see some comparisons. And then I took some of the figures that she gave us and that was, there was a record of 700 kids registered and out of those 700, 242 completed. Now, completed means they did the whole program. A lot of kids started it and at some point, they didn't finish it. They may have handed in their materials, but they didn't actually finish the entire program. So, you can see, out of the 700 registered, 1, 0 to 5, 33% of them, from 6 to 10-year-olds, over 40% of those registered, and 11 to 17, 15%. You might think that we're disappointed with that 15%, we're not. We are ecstatic over 15% of 11-year-olds to 70-year-olds coming to the library to participate, signing up to participate in the program. Then of those that completed, out of those that were registered, 36% of the 0 to 5-year-olds completed, 35% of the 6 to 10-year-olds completed. And then look at that for the teenagers, 53% of the kids that signed up completed or completely finished the program. We are doubly ecstatic about that. We're tickle pick. So, we're, we think it's been a great program. Some of you, I think, were a little curious about the Harry Potter escape room. That was, the top picture shows a little bit of how it was decorated. And then the bottom picture is two groups of kids who went through it. You can see from their faces how excited they were. I think I mentioned it last time that we had requests from adults. They, when they saw this for their kids, they said, "Hey, we want to do it too." And so, we had a bunch of adults and that's what the other two sets of pictures are, some of the adults that participated as well. Okay, another thing that we did this summer was that, was teaching chess and these are pictures from our chess tournament. So, you can see the kids were very, very serious. In fact, today, they're, they're still coming in and challenging, doing private competitions. They're challenging each other and coming to the, coming to the library to do it. So, coming in September, we're going to start our adulting 101 classes with the cooking class, there's going to be two of them, simple cooking. In October, we're going to be doing car shop with Trevor, which Trevor, Reagan. For Trevor Reagan, he's going to be doing two car shop sessions with our teenagers. And then for the younger kids, we have snap circuits. We're going to have Pirate Day on Talk Like a Pirate Day, which is on the 19th. For the younger crowds, for our steam project, we've got bug bots. And for the middle-aged and teenage tween groups, we're going to be the clouds, the thunder clouds again, that were so popular. Then for adults, we've got some crafts, we've got the book club. And that's not all, there's so much stuff, I had a hard time getting it all in. So, please do see the newsletter, you can get to that through the website or you can get to that through Facebook. Okay, and then we postponed Liberty Lake Reads to October. The book is The Curious Charms of Arthur Pepper. The friends have bought us 12 copies of that book and one audiobook copy and half of them are already checked out. We had somebody bring a book, bring a copy back today and said that that was the best book that they'd read all year. So, we're hopeful that that will entrance everybody in Liberty Lake.
I just have one, one comment. I wanted to mention that Mary Pearson and Katie and I attended the volunteer appreciation affair at the library a week ago Saturday. And it was really great because there were about 16 volunteers and the library really couldn't function without them. And it was a nice event and I think they all appreciated the recognition that we gave them. And I gave our appreciation from council on your behalf.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us.
You're welcome.
All right, well, good evening. Before we get to our monthly report, just a couple of things on your agenda tonight for your consideration. You have to answer questions or just briefly go over those so that you know what they are. One is an amendment to an interlocal agreement with Spokane County. Back in 2015, the city entered into a 15-year agreement, reference our computer-aided dispatch records management system, our rural mobile system that we keep in our patrol cars. This is an amendment to that 15-year agreement that really cleans up some language that has to do with, they changed the name of some of the governance board. They changed members of the governance board as to who could participate and allows for those on the governance board to select a fill-in for them. And then it also mentions establishing what they call a core team and an executive core team, which is a recommending body to the governance board for spending money, reference the CADA system. I do sit on the core team and executive core team, so I do get a little say in those decisions and those recommendations that are made to the governance board. The funding mechanism really hasn't changed. It's based, it goes over a five-year average rolling, rolling average of your number of reports that are written by your agency. And so, that's what's on the agenda tonight, is it's just an amendment to the interlocal agreement that was originally passed in 2015. The second one is kind of a late-minute addition, but it is that the MOU was Central Valley School District for allowing the police department to have access to their cameras at their schools. So, it's something they're working on for a while. It's determined that to make that happen, MOU needs to be, MOU needs to be established between us and the school district. So, it's really, there's no cost involved in this, it's more about notifications as to when we would access those cameras and that we need to notify the school district before we do so and providing a list to the school district as to who can declare an emergency when those cameras can be used. And so, it's a lot of language, I think it was six pages. But again, there's no cost associated with it. Sean had made, had reviewed it, he made some edits to the original MOU, those were adopted in the MOU that you have in front of you for tonight for consideration. So, those are two things on the agenda tonight and have to answer questions now if you have any.
I have a question. I look at the amended agreement and I was just wondering, how much is that going to cost the city?
Well, I don't have a good answer for you. What I can say is it's something that we have been doing since 2015. Any change in the fee structure, it remains the same. It's all based on accounting cost allocation matrix that they use.
I saw that.
So, so I'll just give you an example as it was explained to me. So, you can see there's nowhere in that agreement that says that we're going to pay $5,000 a year for the service because it's all based on the costs associated with new programs we might decide to, to bring on for, to make the system better, as per personnel costs. So, as an example, there was a person that was assigned to this group that was 100% funded through this funding mechanism, that was a, you know, $100,000 plus employee. That person's now retired, they're going to bring on somebody else to fill that position and it's going to be at a less rate than that, than the original rate. So, based on that, the cost is going to go down because our share of that is cheaper. But there's going to be, it gets complicated, so bear with me. But there's, there's a couple of people within these organizations that a percentage of their time is attributed to this project. And so, that also can change where maybe somebody before was, 40% of their time was attributed to this and now it's going to be 60% of the time. So, those additional costs will also be borne by all the players in this agreement, which is every agency in Spokane County. So, I can't give you an exact dollar figure. My best guess at this is that it's really not going to have any financial impact more than we're paying today.
And how much is that?
It's all rolled in to a law enforcement services agreement that includes dispatch services, if we ever use the sheriff's helicopter for their detectives or SWAT team. It's all wrapped into a overall law enforcement services agreement that we get, that we pay on a quarterly basis. And so, this specific item, taken out of that, I don't have a specific dollar.
Okay, well, it'll be reflected in the budget for 2019, is that correct?
You're welcome.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Their camera system, is it, is it the same that we have, so it's, obviously it's very, is it compatible versus something, do we need something special, extra to be able to get into their...
We do not. So, it's IP-based, so it's a web-based camera system.
Okay.
So, officers will be able to pull that information from their patrol cars or from their desktops.
So, it's not complicated?
No, it's a matter of them providing us an IP address and password.
Okay, cool. The agreement still allows for Central Valley to give the police department access to their system. Do we have a, excuse me, a timeframe with these new cameras we've ordered moving in to possibly install?
So, we are, the vendor's actually coming on site September 6th to view the different locations, the city staff, and make an interpretation as to best locations. And then, it'll be on that as far as delivery.
Great, thank you.
All right, next thing I have to talk about is just because I brought up that a couple of the last council meetings is our, our parking enforcement for the storage of RVs and trailers and such. So, as you know, an ordinance was passed, we do our best at enforcing that as time allows. We really are doing that on a complaint basis, so I don't have officers specifically going around looking for parking enforcement violations. But if we do receive a complaint, then we will deal with that on an individual basis. Some of the frustration, I think, is just a misunderstanding of the ordinance. So, we have to be able to prove that a vehicle was stored on a city street for 72 hours. So, that doesn't mean that a citizen gets to see that there for a week and then calls us and say that it's been there for a week, you need to move it today. We need to be able to document from a law enforcement standpoint that we know that that vehicle has not been moved for 72 hours. So, after the last meeting, what we've done on a couple of these, that we've actually had officers out now marking tires so that we can in fact show if a vehicle has been moved or not. So, once we determine after that 72 hours has elapsed, then we ticket that vehicle and then the ordinance says after that ticket is issued, after a reasonable amount of time, then the vehicle can be towed. So, it could be multiple days or a week or more before you might see action taken after receiving a complaint. But we are doing our best to deal with those issues. And if you do, if you have been out homestead, which seems to be the biggest violator of that, five of the six vehicles that we were having issues with are all gone. And there's still a little utility trailer sitting there that we're trying to take care of, so. But if you have questions about the parking enforcement or our efforts and what it is we're trying to do, please let me know. It is not a priority for us, for a lot of citizens it is, but it is going to be complaint-driven as time allows.
Question, G?
Yeah.
Question, Chief?
Yeah.
I understand completely when you say that it'd be complaint motivated. But I'm also assuming if an officer goes by and sees an infraction, that they'll do something about it?
For parking enforcement? Unless it is a safety issue, like it's blocking an intersection, parked on a crosswalk, sidewalk, creating a visibility issue, then... No.
Okay, thanks.
And what's the number that we call for reporting for actions?
So yeah, the probably best thing is to call a crime check. Number 4562233.
Thank you.
Okay. Just a reminder, everybody, back to school tomorrow. So there was an article splashed about some back-to-school safety issues. So our officers will be out there. If it's any indication, there's a barbecue going on right now for the schools, and it's, the streets are packed right now. So we're expecting a fun day filled with those things tomorrow. And then I think, last thing that I have, the report I'll get you, is we started our larger events at Pavilion Park is having an officer presence there. So we have an officer at the symphony. We have an officer, we're going to have an officer at the Fourth of July, and an officer at Barefoot in the Park as we move forward. So our bigger events, those three have been identified specifically. Our plan is to try to have an officer onsite, put a little pop-up, a little police department banner, so that if there's issues, questions, we had at the symphony a foster child. And so any of those types of issues comes up, it'll be easy to locate and deal with those. The report you have, you have a printed copy in front of you. I'm glad to report that for the month of August, that our calls for service are back down to what is considered normal for us. So if you remember, the prior month, we had over 700 calls for service. I was hoping that was not a trend. So this is more of a manageable number for us. And then there's just a couple of incidents on there, kind of highlights of our month, if you will. The very first one is very interesting. That person was very thankful. It was a subject that was moving to Liberty Lake from California, hired a moving company. The person right down at Liberty Lake to his house wanted his goods, and got a call from the moving company basically saying, "We know you paid us already, but we are holding on to your items until you pay us more." So even though it's really not our case, we felt bad for this person. Our detective got involved with law enforcement in California and Oregon. We were working with them, able to locate where these household items were being stored at a storage facility in Oregon. Based on some help with the guard agency, the guard detective, a search warrant was collected, and they found not only the person that's moving here's items, household items, but five or six other families' items as well. So he was, he was very thankful. And actually, him and his family came in and thanked us a person just last week, so. So it was good. And then you can, you can read the others just for time's sake, but I also did send out an email, a message told me today about, we have a fatality, motorcycle collision on Valley Way, about eight, low after 8:00 last night. And that case is still under investigation. So with that, there's pictures of Jeff Jones as well at the library, covered that, with our video. Better than the picture for us. Have to answer any other questions you might have?
Well, just to remind everybody about the event on 15th.
So on September 15th, well, there's a couple of things we're, a lot of things we're on, but September 15th, we're having a cruising with the cops event at the Liberty Lake Police Department. It was expecting maybe 80 vehicles. So it's going to be bigger than last year's event, and it's to benefit special police Washington.
Right, Shane?
Yeah.
Okay. So two items I passed out there. One's the normal map you're used to seeing. I've plotted calls on it this month. I apologize, there's no detail on the, on the second piece there. Melanie's on vacation this month, or this week, rather. She usually gives me a little narrative about some of the interesting calls that we went on. So we're minus that this week. But it looks, or this month, it looks like there's about, it's like over 80 calls for service in the Liberty Lake area. Pretty normal. Maybe down a little bit, actually, for the month of August. A few things of note. The burn ban is still in effect. So the city's still getting calls about that. You know, we're not out of the woods for a while still. There's, there's about five or six major fires still burning in Washington. We're still pretty active statewide, although not very active here in the county. That could change. Fuels are certainly dry enough to burn. We've just been fortunate that we haven't had many starts here in the county that have really gotten very large. So that's good news. But there's no talk at this early point of doing anything with the burn ban for a while. Department-wise, a big item where we're working on right now is budgeting. You know, we're in the budgeting season, so we have to have our budget done, completed, approved, and through the public review process by early November to the county. So we're kind of right in the middle of that process. In terms of big items this year, there's not much going on capital-wise, certainly nothing in our new station here in Liberty Lake. We've got our regular apparatus replacements that we'll be doing. But beyond that, just, I think, one station remodeled, and pretty quiet year on the capital front, which is good because we need to take a breath after we did quite a bit of capital in this couple of years. And then lastly, we, the board held interviews for vacated commissioners positions. So Joe Dawson, who'd been a commissioner in the department for 20 years, retired due to some health reasons recently. And we, it was interesting, we had six candidates interview for that remainder of his term. And the board chose a gentleman, John, I believe he pronounced his name, Gresko? Gresko. John is a fourth-generation Valley resident, business owner, owns a marketing firm, business owner in the Valley, so seems excited to get started. I think he'll do a good job for us, so. That's about it. That's all I have. If you have questions, I can help you with.
One question you have here, there's two service calls. What's considered a service call?
Well, a service call would be anything that doesn't fit into, so it could be anything from something leaking that people think might be hazardous, could be an animal in distress, could be a non-categorized call. So it really could be a wide variety of things that don't fit into the other normal categories.
Well, that case is good that there's only two.
Yeah, yeah, some of them are pretty strange. Yeah. All right, we got some time?
Yeah.
For this wonderful Liberty Week event.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would be so kind as to show everybody the present except for Odin?
Mayor, if you'll excuse Odin for family?
Second.
Would you second further discussion? We're hearing long papers. Aye. The agenda is before you.
Mayor, move the agenda before you with one modification, when the executive session's taking out a second vote.
Second.
The real estate.
Yes.
Would you second amend the agenda with that one exception on 14th. Further discussion, I hear you all, people say aye. Aye. He gets over to his conference. Wow. Holly, where's Holly? There she is.
Good evening, ladies and mayor, city council members. Thank you very much. I'm Holly Wiggum. I live on North Fairway Road, just up the street a bit from Liberty Lake Elementary School. First thing I'd like to say is just thank you for going to the Fourth of July concert on fireworks, and Barefoot in Park, and the concert by the Spokane Symphony. Just amazing. So I want to thank the city, I want to thank the friends at Pavilion Park, I want to thank the police department, everybody who has anything to do with that. It just makes us so glad that we moved here last year. We've been here 13 months now, and we just love it. The main thing I wanted to bring up today is, Councilman Kamiskas and I had a similar chicken incident this morning trying to dodge cars. I jog two mornings a week down to the anti-time fitness gym, and I go down Multer between Mission and Appleway. So you're going north, down the hill. I always think of it as south when I'm going down the hill. The main entrance to Meadowwood Technical Park is quite broad. And I cannot tell you, only jogging two mornings a week down to the gym, how many times I've almost been hit by cars turning left into, the second morning, into the lot. So I was wondering, and I don't know if this is the city's purview, and I don't know that you'll know, or if I should be contacting somebody at the technical park. Is there a way, is it legal to put like crosswalk markings just to kind of get the employees at the technical park to kind of be aware that? Yes, I know, I have friends who live on my street who also walk, they walk, they don't jog, but they also walk down the gym. There's a, there's a sidewalk there. So they shouldn't be expecting pedestrian traffic, in my humble opinion. So I just wanted to bring it up to council because I could not find anything that says we couldn't do it. I also didn't see anything, see anything that says we could do it. So if I'm happy to contact, I'm, Greenstone owns that part, so I'm happy to contact the people at Greenstone to see if they would do it. But I wanted to, if it's a city thing, I don't want to infringe on that.
What we'll do is Katie will talk to Meadowwood Tech partners. They own the property.
Okay.
And both that one and the ones on the, on the Mission side.
Mission's not quite so big because the building's big.
But again...
But yeah, that would be, that would be fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Tom?
Good evening, Councilmember River District. Different than the last meeting, I guess I'm just going to call up on Holly's, and I just want to say thank you to the city staff, everyone in general. This has been a year when there has been an awful lot that was a surprise. There's been an awful lot of work that you folks have done for strategic planning, for capital improvements. But having two directors need to be replaced. Kevin, Katie, Jan, Dennis, Lisa, and all of their staff really stepped forward in being able to watch it day after day, week after week, month after month, while we're here and have, I think, Kevin has just done a fantastic job. And I only need another, maybe half a minute to invite you all to the River District this Friday at 6:00 and 8:00 o'clock, the new park, which is no longer going to be called West River Park. We'll wait for the unveiling to see what it really is. There will be a party there, there will be things for kids, there will be things for families. Please come, it'll be a dedication. Have a good time. Our celebrity guest who will be there, and I don't know whether they're going to unveil it or whatever, will be our city council member. Q and A. The rest of them, please.
What time is it?
6:00 to 8:00 this Friday.
Thank you, gentlemen. Don't forget the words ahead.
Remember that? Almost.
While I get a minute, 21?
Oh, there we go. I feel like I'm at the NFL Draft. Next up, the Seattle Seahawks. Let's see, next on the clock. The reason why I'm up here is that two weeks ago, three weeks ago, was it? The youth commission put on a talent show. I've got to tell you guys, those who did not go to it, you missed out. We have got a lot of talent in this town. I mean, kids that can sing, kids that can dance. I mean, it was awesome. And there were three people in this room that had a terrible job. That was Katie, Shane, and Chris. They had to judge it. Because I got to tell you, every one of them was a winner. And I hope that the youth commission is planning on doing that annually. And I hope that the advertising is a little bit more heavier on it because, you know, it was only out for about a week. And I think, you know, if we get the word out there, I had a suggestion, possibly of doing it prior to a movie night. Have, you know, earlier in the act, you know, then you have to get a big crowd, and then you have a movie afterwards. But what they did, they had the kids come up, then they had games going, that, I mean, it was ongoing. It was, it was really enjoyable. I just want to let everyone know that it was fun.
Thanks. As long as we're talking... Did we check the banners today?
Yeah.
As long as we're talking about talent, the Labor Day concert, although Kramer concert was absolutely fantastic. But we have with us two talent, and Jennifer, you did a wonderful job directing. Well, you pulled that one off pretty slick. I'll tell you what, that was pretty, so, thank you. And thanks again to the crew for making the park look exceptionally well. Bring us to our local business spotlight, and I see Plush Skin Salon and Spa, Brittany, where it's... There she is.
Hello, my name's Brittany Edwards. Thank you for having me. Not really like a good at speaking in public, so. So a little backstory of the salon. I started out as a little one-man operation about two years ago. And then I just started expanding, I do lashes, facials, body waxing, all different spa services like that. And then I just got super popular and added a couple girls that helped me out. And then the space ran just too small. And we're now currently over in the Riviera, where Riviera Tanning Salon was at. And we've been there since December of this year, so not quite a year yet. So we expanded and added tanning. And then we have hair, and we have nails. So I have four seditions, a massage therapist, one nail girl, and one hair girl. So it's all in, you know, about a year and a half we did that. So it's pretty exciting. I'm not sure, quite sure how the space had come available, but it was the best thing that happened to us. So we're super excited to be in there. We just expanded again into Tratina. So we took over a lease that Spa Perdisio had in there. It was too much of a drive, I believe, was what was going on. So I took over there, at least since over there, we do facials, hair, nails, and massage. So we're just getting really big and really excited. I hope to, maybe once the big candy guards area opens up, to maybe bring like an actual spa to Liberty Lake so that people don't have to go all the way into downtown or into quarterly until they get that type of service, which is, you know, what my husband and I are super interested in. We both live in Liberty Lake, we've lived here for, we're going on six years now. We live over in the River District, and we really love it here. And so we just hope to keep doing good services for the community. And I think for this year too, we want to, whoever I could talk to to about getting more involved, like maybe like food drive stuff or something, I have a really big crew of girls that has big hearts and like to give back a little bit more and stuff like that, so. And give you guys half off of the service to come try us out and just say you're part of the city council and like to get a massage or something like that.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming. I didn't really advise her there.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Brittany.
Thank you, Brittany, yeah.
Now, you're over on Apple, is that correct?
No, I'm over by Yolk's.
By Yolk's?
By Yolk's. Yep.
Perfect. Right next to Yolk's. So you can go get the massage and go get your groceries. Perfect. Now we have recognition, Mark Coldhouse. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I am honored tonight to present the recognition to Officer Mark Coldhouse for his life-saving efforts that happened back in... to Officer Mark Holt House for his life-saving efforts that happened back in June. So he was put in for accommodation by a sergeant, and I will read that to you. On June 16th, 2018, at about, this is police talk, eight fifty-seven hours, about nine, Officer Holt House responded to a medics call where a gentleman called to report a male was unconscious and slumped over his steering wheel. Officer Holt House recognized the urgency of the call and responded to the Safeway parking lot to assess the situation. Upon arrival, he saw a subject that was unconscious and non-responsive. He immediately began CPR on him at about a minute after arrival and continued to do so until fire responded and took over CPR, which was about ten minutes later. Officer Holt House was able to assist in restoring this person's heartbeat and he was transported to, by AMR to Sacred Heart Medical Center for further medical treatment. Several witnesses to the event reported that Officer Holt House was calm and collected the entire time and brought a sense of order to an otherwise chaotic situation. Officer Holt House's dedication to duty and genuine concern for the public safety resulted in this person's life being safe. His actions are a direct reflection of his overall professionalism and being a great credit to Liberty Lake Police Department and to the city as a whole. So I'd like to present you with our Liberty Lake Police Department Life Saving Medal.
Awesome. Speaker. I think the board's up too. Get the camera. Ricky, you have your camera?
For sure. For sure. And for those in the audience, I happened to pull up right when Mark started CPR. I was off duty and I would check and see if Mark needed my help. And you talk about a scene where there's a lot of emotion, a lot of stress, a lot of chaos. He was the one who stayed calm the entire time, so extremely good job.
City Board reports, so. My inclusion? Nobody. Arts Commission? Nobody. Sewer? There we go.
Phil Genaway, Liberty Lake, water and sewer district. So the good thing about today is that our meetings are usually on Monday, so the council meets on Tuesdays, so you really don't know, but we're having a meeting tomorrow, so any of you that would like to come to one of our board meetings, tomorrow four o'clock, good time to come. So I was gonna talk about Eastside Water System completion, re-ridge water stuff, but Katie goes, you know, we hear a lot about what's going on in the peripheral, but we don't hear much about what's going on in Liberty Lake itself. Well, it's pretty, the good news is that you have good clean water and great sewer system. So there's really, there's really nothing going on that's, that's kind of an emergency situation. We do have some problems in the lake and we do have some problems with some of the outlying areas, but, you know, we're working through those and hopefully the burden won't be on the city of Liberty Lake. So since I live in the city of Liberty Lake, that will be my task is to kind of hold that down. So that's about all I have unless you have any questions. Over, we're doing a remodel on the old fire station. That should be done this fall. We're gonna turn that into our lab, there'll be parking for the boats and public trucks, and there will be an information center in there so the kids can come and have tours of the treatment plant, find out what really happens in a sewer system. So it's gonna be kind of a cool thing and all of you would be invited to come to those and learn something about water and sewer processes. So, that's it. Questions?
Thank you Bill.
Thank you Bill.
City Council reports. Notice this on the agenda.
Good. Good. Now here, we're gonna... I'll just throw, tonight was the back school night for our combination elementaries and a great turnout for, I'd say, the community. Between the two schools, I don't have the exact number, but I believe there is greater than a thousand students. So we have a great resource of young people in our community and we wish them well in the coming school year.
Okay?
Just a quick note, and I don't have the date in front of you, but if you guys are watching your emails that we get from AWC, the AWC Regional Meeting is coming up, I think it's in September, it's in the evening.
October.
I know Shane and I go for...
It's October.
That's October, okay. So in October is the AWC Regional Meeting. It is in, I think it's actually at Naribut Center Place this year, last year we went...
Doubletree. It was Doubletree downtown.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So it's pretty well attended, it's a nice chance to get to have some discussions with some jurisdictions close by, whereas you know, AWC and Lundy, you don't really get to have that interaction. But it was only the meeting last year and I encourage you guys to get registered and enter here that... Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Quick update, I'm gonna start with Trevor Reagan, he's gonna give you an update on our Trailhead irrigation project.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. So, last week was kind of the start of the trailer, staking, contractor's staking their equipment down the course. Hoping tomorrow, if not Wednesday, or sorry, Thursday, to start trenching the main line. That's gonna be the first, the first few weeks that two separate crews are gonna be doing is land the main line and then after they get, probably about two, three weeks in, one crew will branch off and start working on the sprinkler heads. We've had great communication with the contractor since they've been up here. We don't really have any issues that have come, come about quite yet. I'm sure that will change with a project this size. I am in the contact for property owners based to the, to the Trailhead Golf Course, so there may come some issues with previous irrigation, whatever that may be, but I have had some very good conversations with a few citizens down there that I don't think that this is going to be an issue. Their understanding and our understanding of their property. I think it's, it's been going really smooth. Like I said, we're only a week in, but the planning up to them actually showing up next week, it's been great communication, like I said, with Dave Taylor, our consultant who we hired to design, and then United GLI was actually... October 29th is the tentative end date. That can vary within a week or so, but I see October 29th being a pretty solid end date for this project. And that's not just the new sprinkler system going in, that's the old sprinklers being removed, the old valves, basically being up and running, even though October 29th we're actually blowing out our sprinkler system. So we won't technically get to use it this year. Contractor will blow it out, we'll be testing here and there, and then come probably March 2019, we'll fire the system up and go from there. So, do you guys have any questions?
Just a quick question, so since we won't be using a related, let's say, production state this year, what, do we hold back certain payment until we prove it's working on a regular basis or does that work?
They do a pressure, it's pressure tested to make sure that it's not leaking, it's fully operational. The retention is released after a period of time, and Dennis, do you know when the retention gets released?
Once they're, we're joined, they pay their...
Subs.
Taxes and their payroll, and we're satisfied with the system.
So it's 10%. You hold back 10% on every progress payment.
But say something, there's more...
Then there's a warranty, there's a warranty period that's allowed for.
Probably ask the contractor to come, yes, certain...
Thank you.
I had the same question over there.
Thanks Brittany.
Thank you.
So also at Trailhead, I'll just tag on to what Trevor had to say. We did get, actually Dennis was able to get estimates for our pump, to replace our pump, from SEMD to CERN so to speak. It's about just under $300,000. That includes a contingency, design, it also includes, let's see, sales tax, so we will, we plan to put that into our budget in 2019. But just a reminder that this project does not include the well, the well will be a separate project next year. So with that, I wanted to follow up on a few things that came up last council meeting, so I'll just go ahead and get started with Orchard Park Splash Pad, and I know some council members probably are gonna have other questions and comments, but let me clarify something about the permit. There's three agencies that became involved over the course of several weeks in July and August. They were the Department of Ecology, the State Department of Health, and the Spokane Regional Health Department. After lots of emails, lots of times weeks, and I think there was at least six to eight weeks dealing with these regulatory agencies, two of them ultimately basically said they have no jurisdiction. And that would be the Department of Ecology and that's also the State Department of Health. So then they didn't get, and I said last meeting that they didn't give us a permit, they didn't give us a permit because they don't have jurisdiction. And our water discharge and the other gallons per minutes that's being generated by the splash pad didn't generate their need to be involved. So though they had a lot of opinions and there was a lot of regulatory information that they were throwing at us, and I'll say throwing at Dennis Scott, at the end of the long discussions, there was no permit required because they simply do not have jurisdiction. So then they deferred back to Spokane Regional Health District. Spokane Regional Health District at the beginnings was not gonna give us any comments until the two other agencies had weighed in on our project, which they didn't do. So I did a quick check in today because I have several emails from this Spokane Regional Health Department. A person has retired, they have told us that our drainage swell is moving along in the right direction, they have vacillated between giving us, approving our design or letting us approve our own design. So the bottom line for this gets back to, at the end of the day, whatever is required by the regulatory agencies, we're gonna do it. And it also pertains to clear risk, we'll ensure whatever we do as long as we follow the local regulations. So that's a lot of information, but I want to tell you that we were caught up in water quality discussions and policy discussions, and then also agencies that were not all moving along at the same speed, and so there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of miscommunication, and I just, it's very frustrating to me and very frustrating to Dennis Scott to have to have our project go through the meat grinder so to speak with very, virtually no value added by these agencies. So, I don't know Dennis, if you wanted to add anything, did I misrepresent anything?
No, they're gonna use this example to write a guideline about how to treat splash heads in the future, because they do not have a regulation that specifies how it should be treated.
And they don't call them splash pads, they call them splash pools. So then once you mention pool to a regulator, they go down a rabbit hole of a swimming pool and it just, anyway, be that as it may, we're moving forward, and I just want to assure the council that whatever is needed to open them up to be fully compliant, our goal is to operate a safe facility that meets all regulations, and we're sticking by that. And at this point, there's no permits required, and at this point, that's what we're, how we're moving forward. So I also know that we had a meeting with a couple council members, and I know Bob wanted to weigh in too, and we needed to make a decision on the, the size and the scope so to speak of our splash pad, and after looking at a variety of different options, council member Kennedy, Hugh Severs, the mayor, myself, Dennis, and a few other of the contracting team, and the engineer, you know what, I'm gonna stop talking, I'll let Hugh and Mike speak to this issue.
Sure. The basics we're, we're at in construction at this point, if we were to, we're throwing on ballpark figures at this point, if we were to take the splash pad, cut it in half, we'd be probably talking at least an additional 20,000 design costs, and it might save us $10,000 in construction cost. So that's issue number one, say, it wouldn't do us any good to cut this down in scale at this point, financially speaking. The question I, when in that meeting, wanted to answer was, is this splash pad designed to be the right size for the park that it's in? And the rationale that I was going with was, I'd done quite a bit of research before going to that meeting, and I've tried to poll as many moms as I knew that use our local splash pad and also the one where we keep in park, which is closer in size. And I'm a person that believes build it the right size regardless of cost. And I'm gonna put it that way, if it should be double the size and we don't have the budget to do it, don't build it. If it should be half the size and it's gonna look like a big airport runway worth of concrete out there, that's gonna look really funny with enough kids in there any given time, don't do it. And that, I would, I say that this way, this isn't a budget comment, but the research that I've been going into that meeting was, the splash pad is designed to be the right size. The way they did, it's a lot larger than the other splash pad. And it's probably gonna feel crowded north of a hundred kids right now. Despite, despite the, some of the numbers we were throwing around last time, it's gonna start feeling crowded and that starts feeling uncomfortable, and that means little kids running around the bump into each other, about a hundred kids. So that's, that kind of told me, okay, a hundred kids, Channingburg was pretty good, and the professionals, I can't remember his name, a gentleman that installed over 3,000 playgrounds, I think he said over a couple hundred splash pads, so he's had a little bit of experience doing this. He kind of turned those numbers that, yes indeed, this is probably not the right size for what you guys are doing. So anyways, long story short, it wouldn't save us any money to make it any smaller. It's on track, we'd be putting construction way behind if we tried to do anything at this point. And my real bullet, core belief is that it is designed to be the right size. I would also throw out that it is gonna be really nice. And it's the features that are, when we start looking at actual details of, of the actual toys that are going there, it's gonna be really nice. And I think the neighborhood's really excited for it, so. Might you have anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to add is that, I agree, when you see some of the features are gonna be there, like this one tree thing that's gonna spray out six-gezillion gallons on our little children, stuff, it's gonna be absolutely spectacular, it really is gonna be nice. Just a little clarification on the dollar amount. It was estimated to be $10,000 probably for a redesign, and it was estimated that maybe $20,000 we could save. And for me, it wasn't so much that dollar amount savings was coming up. I think that's important to know what the numbers are.
It's flip, maybe.
Yeah. It was a $10,000 cost, estimated $20,000.
Sounds like a good save.
Agreed, disagree.
Yeah. So the point for me was, is that if someone's a dental, it didn't make sense to try to reduce or anything like that. What brought this up, I just want to reiterate everybody's mind, is that it was in all the reports that were given to us, it was gonna be 1,100 square feet, 1,100 square feet. We have 900 square feet in the present park now, but then when the research was given a little more, and Dennis did some research, come to find out, that was a typographical error. It was supposed to be 11,000 square feet, but we ended up with about 8,000 square feet. So for my interest and concern was, the inconsistency is what really requires us to ask questions, okay? Because even the report said, based on what the design was, and this guy who puts out 300 some other posts, the report shows that it was 20 square feet per child, so that would be 400. And I said, if there's other information, then that should have been brought up after the fact is incidental. Bottom line, we're gonna have one heck of a really nice place there. But realize, keep in mind, we're also looking at something over, that's gonna be in the River District, but elsewhere in town, we're gonna be putting in one. We put in 8,000 square feet into that, and that's as large, almost as large as what Portlay has. So as we move forward, and I hope that we use more common sense and really look at, what are we getting? I get a little concerned, and I think Mr. Moore, Councilman Moore, has brought this up on several occasions, is that sometimes it comes by the time all the work and research has been put into, by the time against the council, we have very little time to do our own research before we're forced to make a decision. And I just hope that we be conscientious of... And I just hope that we be conscientious of that. Councilman Moore did an excellent job years ago pointing out that we did the ball fields, beautiful ball fields, great asset, but it was going to be X number of dollars, and it turned out to be a lot more because there was the assumption of the council that we were going to have more things in there, and it was not. So, they had to be added on. So, I just hope as we move forward, we use some common sense, that a little more time spent with council, being able to look at exactly what we're getting. I think it's going to be a great asset in the city.
I just wanted to thank Councilmen Severs and Kennedy for their time and efforts in meeting with the mayor and staff and the vendor to evaluate what some of the options were. I mentioned to Katie at the break that I wanted to make some comments on this, and I hope that they're going to be interpreted as being constructive ones and not critical ones. You know, I've always been an advocate of transparency in government, and I spent almost five years on the planning commission, and I've spent almost five years on city council now. And I think I've met with the mayor and Katie maybe one or two times, and it was at their request. And because I think that we should have transparent government, and I think decisions such as the Orchard Park should be made publicly, and we should be transparent about it. Now, the meeting that you all had was a non-niced or unnoticed meeting, so it really wasn't a public, public meeting. But, you know, we're making public decisions at those meetings for the city to continue their efforts on the splash pad, and make a decision on the splash pad specifically that were discussed in our previous council meeting. So, there are some extenuating circumstances, and I understand that. My concern is, I don't want, I don't want to establish a precedent that these kinds of decisions are made in private meetings with a couple of council members and the mayor and staff. And the decisions like this are made publicly and were transparent so that the public, the people that elected us, know what's going on. So, I hope that my comments are constructed and accepted that way. They're certainly intended to be.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, moving along, I have one more thing about Orchard Park that I wanted to bring the council attention. So, some of you may be aware that the existing contract did not include a maintenance building of any sort. And we had, we had mentioned that when we awarded the bid, it's not a surprise. Dennis did get an estimate from the contractor that's on the site now to install that building. And we just got this information today, pretty much, and it's approximately $96,000. So, that is a 24 by 30 shop with power, electricity, and heat. One of the things I wanted to point out is that we have no other, we, the city, have no other property or facilities over in the River District at all. And this is our only place to store equipment. And we don't, we know that we need it, we don't have to have it this year. This isn't meant to be asking you to approve anything tonight. But I'm going to provide you with a copy of what we have. And what I want to say is that we can do it this year, I have a price, or we can do it next year. But I can tell you that opening this park without this facility is going to be very difficult for us to maintain and operate that park with plowing, with, excuse me, mowing equipment, so on and so forth. And I know Jen has a lot more details than I have. So, if you want to look at this price, the hard thing, I, I don't know what it would be next year if I bid it out next year. I know this price is only good for 30 days. So, we have to let the contractor know by September 18th. So, at this point, I'm just letting you know, I can bring it back as a contract, it would be a change order, we'd have to fund it, or we would include it in 2019 as part of our budget. But we do know that we do need that facility, Mayor. So, I'm just bringing it up tonight to get some feedback on what, what the preferences of the council are on this situation.
I really support that we move ahead to have something, and there I've been supportive of that since day one, that I think we needed. And I would like to see something done now, while we're in the process of having all the work done over there. I would recommend that we bring that forward in our next council meeting or discussion and vote, see if we can move forward.
I agree. I would second your motion.
I also agree.
Okay. So, we'll put it in. In the meantime, we'll give you a copy of the, what is included in the 95, $96,000. The building itself is just a little bit over 50, but by the time you install it, pour the pad, bring the power and the gas heat to the facility, it's, it's up there about $96,000. And that's all in with a, does that include a contingency?
There... No, it doesn't.
Does not?
No.
But we have enough contingency left in the remainder of the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask Katie another question. Is, is the size of that building, is that, has been taken into consideration that for the next 20 years, 25, 30 years, now it's going to be sufficient in size?
Oh, that's Jen to answer that question.
It really is? Great.
Considering the other characters and green spaces going away, we, when we planned the size for it and actually put upcoming equipment for February 18th, it's not just Orchard Park, it's for maintaining the Sentinel Trail, for maintaining the bits of turf along the park, and in future, possible Mission, and I'm going to get it, it's going to compensate the whole north side.
Why would, yeah, why I say that? For something like that, because it's going to be, it's going to be an entity goes on and on, I would rather than be built right to begin than to try to look, well, we can get by with this, let's survive, and then five hours down the road, we're going, why didn't we do it for us?
We definitely planned the entire park.
So, it's larger, get the mowers in, and things like that, sort of there. Thanks.
So, Katie? So, hey, just to say something about the size. Just to give the council a better perspective on the size of the splash pad. When the number of 20 square feet per child came up, that came from a PowerPoint presentation that apparently, honestly, we all used. Why they use it, I'm not sure. Because a 20 square foot is like four by five square. If you took a four by square in this room and said, okay, kids, this four by five is your spot, and every four by five was filled with a child, and this kid wanted to go from this place to that place, he's going to have a hard time getting there. So, I take the 20 square feet thing and push off the side and look at what you really need to have in order to have kids run from one place to another.
I, because I brought up a 20 square feet, I really appreciate you saying that, and I think what you saying that confirms is that we have to have a better handle on what we're spending money on. If it should have been 40 square feet, then that's what it should have been. But when we only have the information that was given to us that shows 20 square feet, what am I supposed to do as a person? Be responsible to the citizens? Have somebody else come and say, well, I don't believe that, it should be 40? Then give me the documentation for it. So, I think your comment confirms, I think we have to have a better handle on things that brought to us, on what we're going to be spending money on.
Just as a, my hope as a solution going forward, and we didn't go with this project, instead, we relied more on, at the time, Andrew to sort of convey design details to us. I don't know if this is easy to do, but I would rather have the architect, who we're actually designed to come in and share their rationale behind the design features. They can share the background, they can, here's the finished project, and we're going to go into construction documentation. And that way, that gives the council a fair, you know, almost a workshop environment, say, splash pad looks great, why is it that big? And they can, you know, hopefully they're professional. I hope that in future projects, we can, absolutely, we can do that, rather than, rather than putting on city staff to be sort of the liaison between...
I agree.
Right. No, I agree. And I, the other thing, just kind of on a side note, you're right, the people that were leading this charge are no longer with us. So, they may have had better answers or different answers than Dennis and I had. But I will tell you this, at the end of the day, we're going to have a great park over there. So, when we found an issue, when we found a problem, we fixed it and we moved on. And so, at the end of the day, it's going to be a wonderful park, and hopefully we'll do have a ribbon cutting. So, okay. So, on that note, I'm going to move, there was a request to send letters to the HOAs on garbage cans, and there's actually two HOAs that have parks in their HOA. One is Meadowwood and one is River District. So, Ann is sending letters to them to remind them. It didn't make sense for us to send letters to all the HOAs because not all HOAs have parks. But anyway, those letters are going out or have gone out?
They went out.
They're going out. Then Country Vista Extension and Traffic Calming, there was a question about, so this is the part of Country Vista going north of Mission towards Appleway. So, that road connection is under construction right now. It should be open soon. I don't have an exact date, but that connection will be complete. Included in that construction is our landscape medians, which are seen as a visual way to calm traffic. And then, next year, then Greenstone would come back and build the traffic calming south of the project. So, wanted to follow up with that.
So, a question about that, I was thinking, and that's great, I'm glad they're planning on doing that because they definitely need something more than just on the new part. So, how can they do that if we, if the city owns the street? Can you tell me how that works?
So, they would have to come in for a permit. They would submit their plans for, to our engineer. Our engineer would review them, and then we would provide them with a right-of-way permit for those improvements.
Right.
Yeah, and they would be at their cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Then the last thing I wanted to follow up with was on the workshop on citizen outreach. We thought we would do it in November, December, kind of, it's real busy right now with end of the year projects and budget and all that. So, we'll look at a workshop on a council meeting at that timeframe. So, moving along to the Heights project, let's see, the pre-construction meeting is September 10th. The drywell that Jen showed you is on the agenda today. That, that has had a drainage problem for a number of years, so there's kind of a time sensitive issue. That drywell is on the Heights paving project, so we want to get that taken care of before we pave the street. Then the engineer, is there anything else on the Heights paving project? It should go very quickly, and we don't have a...
I have some patching to do on Gary, and I can't totally, I can't tell that Dennis is going to go very quick.
Okay. Then, we also are advertising, you might remember, for the engineer and project manager that Dennis has helped us with all summer. So, those interviews are this Friday. We have a half a dozen candidates, and we're very excited to get someone on board because it's been a long summer. Then, and just to kind of in closing dates, to remember, the Rim Ride is September 15th and 16th. The September 15th is also the car rally that Chief Asmus mentioned. And then, in October, on a council meeting, October 16th, we have an open house honoring Pamela Mogan, and it will be right before the council meeting. So, what we thought is, we'd have the open house, invite council, the community to come in and bid her farewell, have light refreshments, and then go into our workshop right after the open house. So, probably start about 4:00, 4:00, 4:30. We'll have more information as we get closer to the date. I believe that concludes my, my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Pamela, anything you want to talk about the library? I know we had fun with, with the friends, the volunteers. Mayor, just...
I just wanted to say again to the council and to the audience that we had a fantastic summer reading program this year, the best we've ever had. The people that helped us with it were outstanding. The community responded with an intense enthusiasm for what was offered, and so it was an all-around great summer. We just, we just really loved working with the community and seeing so many, so many kids, especially coming in on the rim this year. So, that was wonderful. We also had a thank you for our volunteers, that was last Saturday, and we operate, we operate with 16 volunteers, and every one of them is very precious to us. We couldn't begin to get done what we got, what we do unless we have those people volunteering. So, if anybody else would like to volunteer, we would love to have you on board.
Make sure you put that in your paper there.
And Mayor, I put up a picture of the symphony that was passed to me, I think from the friends, but it was packed. So, this is a new picture we can use for recruiting or advertising our city.
Yeah. Anyway, great job, and those people are just fantastic. The games that they played were perfect for the volunteers, a lot of fun. Okay, so, we're in action items.
Mayor, move action item General Business 102 to approve amendment number one. Oh, sorry, let me do the consent agenda. To approve August 21st, 2018, to the council office, and to approve September 4th, 2018, grant 412,756 dollars in goodbyes cents.
Moving second discussion. I hear any on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, I move General Business number one to approve amendment number one to the interlocal
agreement with Spokane County for C A D R M S.
Second. Moving second for the discussion. I hear any on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, if we go.
Move General Business number two to award contract to Poplinsky Excavation in amount of $5,657.60 for renovations, construction for drywall on the Heights addition project paving.
Second. Moving second for the discussion.
A question?
Yeah.
Jen, isn't that what you, is this what you referred to in your report? I thought so. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I hear any on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Three, do you have this one on yours? Pro memo and understanding, necessary rights.
CB School District cameras.
Correct. I think they just voted on it.
No, that was the second, that was the excavation. I move General Business number three to approve memorandum of understanding Central Valley School District for camera access.
Okay. Moving second for the discussion.
I just want to say, I'm grateful for our ability to cooperate with this jurisdiction. Cooperation for the name of public safety, it's great.
Yep.
Perfect. It was really fun to cooperate with, I'll tell you what. Any other further discussion? I hear you on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, if we go.
September 18th, our next meeting, we plan to have a contract to award banking services. RJ's working on that. We have a potential that Central Valley School District will be requesting an annexation, so if we receive it in time, it will be on this agenda. And then, there will be a first read ordinance related to our business licenses. It's to make some housekeeping changes so that we're in compliance with state law. So, pretty straightforward. Oh, and then I will have also a contract with Inline, excuse me, with Bacon for the construction of the facility, and I'll get you guys a copy of this. This is the facility, the maintenance facility at Orchard Park.
I did notice on upcoming agendas, we have October 16th, main, second red ordinance 108. I recommend that we remove that because we eliminated the first read of that.
Do we have a workshop scheduled for that yet?
No, and thank you, I need to do that.
Anything else? Says comments? Jim?
James Alexander Lacey Ridge, with the request for annexation of the schools. I'm just curious, what do we get, what do they get, and what does that cost us? You know what I mean? And the guy over here in the corner is going to need an additional cop to patrol those areas, and before the Henry Road gets done, they're going to have to drive a long ways to get from, say, the high schools to the new middle schools. So, we need to think about what that's going to cost us to enhance the high school. I think it's a great idea, giving a new city, but let's do it with some thought.
Thank you, James. Any other comments? Well, once, twice, three times? Okay, we're going to move on to executive section. Just take about 20 minutes, max?
15.
15 minutes.
15 minutes?
We go 8:05.
And come out with a little dirt, okay?